June 16, 2025, St. Clair Shores City Council Meeting to Order. Abby, please call the roll.
Mayor Walby?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Karen?
Here.
Councilmember Frederick?
Present.
Councilmember Rubelo?
Here.
Councilmember Rusi?
Here.
And Councilmember Vitale?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to proclamations and presentations, sad news that I have to inform you of is that the passing of Ed Jones. Ed was actually doing his city duty here. He was a planning commissioner since 1999, and on June 10th, he attended the planning commission here in these chambers, suffered a heart attack in the morning of June 11th. The next morning, he passed. Ed Jones was a Southlake graduate, electrician. As I said, he was on the planning commission for more than a quarter century. He was a founding member of the Optimists. He was on the Activities Committee. He was on the Parade Committee in the early days. He was part of the Baseball Softball Association. He was a St. Clair Shores guy, cared about the town, cared about his family, married to Colette for many years, two boys, grandson. Not only did he love to talk about the city, loved to talk about his place up north, spent many, many years, times in his cottage in the U.P. Ed will be missed. Community, St. Clair Shores has many of these, and Ed Jones was one of them that just gave all the time to this community. So I ask for a moment of silence for the passing of Ed Jones. Thank you. I ask you that you keep his wife, Colette, and his boys and the grandson in your prayers. They need it. It's a tough time, as many of us who go through losing their parent is. So again, please keep Ed, Colette, and the family in your prayers. Always a hard transition when you have these sad things, but we do continue forward. And again, as Ed was part of the Memorial Day Parade for many years, only fitting that we'll have presentations here of the Memorial Day Parade Awards. I know we're going to have Pam Mason up here. The Chairwoman, come on up. I'm going to give her the mic, and I'm going to come down too, because this is always good. I like to congratulate and thank people who are, who keep our parade going and do a great job. Renee, how are you? Good. So we'll get you right in the middle, right in there, and I'll stand on maybe this side, and you talk about a little bit of the parade, and then give out the awards. Your show, Pam Mason.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. I don't know who's who, but hopefully we have everybody here. This was our 72nd parade, and our next coming parade is the year, St. Clair Shores birthday, 73...
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. The parade is the 73rd. America's 250th, so we have a big parade coming up, and we're working on it already. But I know they have a big agenda today, so I want to get through this and let them get to work. So our very first award goes to Best Overall Entry is the American Polish Century Club.
We got them up on the screen. Congratulations. Thank you for being part of the parade.
Beautiful float.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good job, you guys.
Hopefully, we see you next year. Best High School Band, our very own Lake Shore High School.
Congratulations. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. Thank you. Next is Best Color Guard, but I don't have a photo of that one. And it's the St. Clair Shores Police Color Guard. Thank you very much. Next is our best patriotic float, and the winner is... Thirty-six.
Nineteen.
St. Clair Shores Eagles, Harry. John, get up here, Mr. President.
Yeah, I got to get in the picture. You got to get in the picture, John.
Think you're going to get away with sitting down?
Well done. Well done.
The next one is Best Band, and that's the Ekor's Mighty Marching Reindeers. But I guess they're not here.
Send that down to them.
Yeah, we might have to do that. All right, for our next one, it's the Best Specialty Entry, and that is the Michigan Fantasy Festival. They had a long weekend at the VFW, so there's a good chance that they are just really tired and couldn't come. And the next one, Mayor's Choice, and this is always a crowd favorite, the Cowbell Choir, which I'm sorry, I don't have a photo for.
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Thanks for being a part of it. Thanks, Vinnie.
Thanks, yep. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for being part of the parade. We appreciate it. Fantastic.
All right, and the last one is Director's Choice, and that is Time Warp Vintage. But I guess they're not here either, so we can drop that off. But thank you, everybody, for participating and putting in so much work and effort and spending your afternoon with us on a holiday weekend. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. So thank you for the Parade Committee for all you do. And again, congratulations to the award winners. If we didn't have participants and people, we wouldn't have a parade. So we are grateful for you who show up and come to our parade year after year. So thank you so much. We look forward to the 73rd, and it's going to be a big one.
Yeah.
So thank you. Before you take this off, here's your chance to get out before you want to be here for three more hours, but...
Renee, that was fantastic. Carol Merrill.
Item three is Audience Participation on Agenda Items. There's two minutes. Abby, do we have anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item that's in front of us this evening?
No, we do not.
Planning Case, Planning Case Item Number Four will come back at the July 21st Agenda. Item Five is the Request to Approve a Tentative Agreement with the St. Clair Shores Police Officers Association for a New Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Lent.
As discussed at our last council meeting's closed session, in here, you will find the terms of the tentative agreement, along with the actuarial evaluation for the drop program, and then the change to the pension plan, and all signed agreements. You will also see that this did pass ratification by the patrol, and everything, as we discussed in our closed session, is kind of attached. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
So this is a four-year contract?
That is correct.
And raises, we give raises throughout the four years? What are they?
The raises are 5% in year one, 3% year two, 3% year four, 2.5% in year four. This does consider condensing our scale into a five-year to max, so it'll take five years to become a max patrolman. This also does include raising the starting pay from 67% to start to 70% to start. And as I mentioned with the actuary analysis, this does include taking their pension from a 2.34% to a 2.5%, as well as the elimination for retiree health care for all new employees hired after August 1st, 2025. Questions?
Mr. Rubelo?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the St. Clair Shores Police Officers Association/Michigan Association of Police for a New Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Mr. Rubelo, supported by Ms. Burgess. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just wanted to say thanks to Dustin for leading the negotiation team on behalf of the city. I think the memo states it pretty nicely. The POA Executive Board, along with the representatives from the Michigan Associated Police, came to the table while prepared to represent their members' interests. Throughout the negotiation process, they presented a reasonable set of proposals while considering the state's financial position and long-term goals. So I guess for several months of negotiations, and then the two parties were able to reach the agreement, was ratified by the members. It's something that I think we, as a city, can abide by and live with, and it's something that the members apparently feel the same way. So thanks for being able to, and thanks to the members of the Police Officers Association for coming to the table, working with the city, and coming to an agreement that everyone can agree upon, even if there might be little things in here we each individually disagree with. Overall, I think it's a really good package, and I guess the police agree with that as well. So thanks for your work on behalf of the state, Dustin, and thanks to the police for working with us, too.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo everything Councilwoman Rusi just said, and kind of just add as well. Both sides, you know, Dustin, both sides agree this makes competitive wages for what we have in our department, correct?
That is correct.
In terms of what, as compared to other municipalities like ours, and that's all been a part in negotiation, and both sides have agreed.
Yes.
Okay. And I think one thing, I believe it's their attorney that's doing the final draft, because, you know, we've gotten all the changes, all the relevant information, but when will the final document be sent to us, final agreement?
We should...
Just for our records.
Yeah, I would probably say it'll be on your next Council's receiving file, so it'll be ready by your next, your next council meeting. I'm hoping to be able to have that and send it out as a draft probably sometime within next week.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Again, seven to zero. I would tell you one of the smoother negotiations that we've had. So excellent job. Item Six is Request to Approve the Fiscal Year 24/25 Budget Amendments. John Walters, who's the Finance Director/Treasurer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here to answer any questions. In your packet is a listing of our end-of-year budget amendments for fiscal year 24/25. For the most part, and the general fund, it's moving money around, with the exception of our insurance. So workers' compensation insurance, wages for workers' compensation, and our unemployment insurance is running significantly over budget, so we had to do an adjustment there. The idea is to stay under budget, so these adjustments hopefully are conservative, so we will still be under budget in all of our departments.
Questions?
Move to Approve.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Item Seven is Request to Approve the 2025/26 CDBG Program Budget. Liz Coto, City Planner. Good evening, Liz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Liz Coto, City Planner. Before you tonight, I have the 2025/26 budget that was proposed to and recommended by the Planning Commission. We had, well, the first thing I want to say is I sent on an email at the end of the day today to delete slash ignore the page that looks like this in your packets. I think it was another page from the spreadsheet. So this is old information. We, the good news is that we have the ability to fund every public service organization for the amount of money that they requested, with the exception of the WAVE project. Because they are a new organization in our funding cycle, we typically only give $1,000 to a new organization to make sure that they can handle the process, because it's a pretty intensive process to go through to make sure that everybody qualifies for the funding. So some highlights of the proposed budget is the Section 108 payment. That's, you're used to seeing that somewhere in the $100,000 to $130,000 range. We're ahead by one payment. So the payments usually are $100,000 in, like, August and $30,000 in February. So we're ahead by $100,000 payment, so that's why it's much smaller for this year. We've got $200,000 set aside for the homeowner rehabilitation program, and the senior activity center would be its normal, $85,000. Macomb County Grass and Snow would be $25,000. Maggie's Wigs for Kids at $3,000. Turning Point at $3,000. Interfaith Caregivers at $2,650. The WAVE project at $1,000. Administration budget at $170,000. We're going to add another $105,000 and change to the Kite Monroe Universal Playground Equipment, and then a new line item of $250,000 to not just rehab, but get all-new bocce ball courts. So I am, and then we also will be funding $4,000 to the Fair Housing Center of Metro Detroit. They are the body that basically helps us police fair housing within the city. And then the Macomb Homeless Coalition is what is called our continuum of care, and actually, we are required to have a continuum of care all the time. So I am here to answer any questions you have.
Let me go back to the Section 108 payment. So we're ahead. I kind of don't get exactly how we ended up ahead, and so when you say "ahead," there's no, right, we're not penalty, and I know that that's not the case, but explain it to me again, why, how we ended up ahead?
Basically, there's two payments a year. There's a payment in August and a payment in February. And so when I started the whole payment schedule, I scheduled the payments to be within the calendar year, and they actually fall in, they don't fall in the calendar year, they fall in the fiscal, right? So I had scheduled the payment in February and the payment in August to come in the same fiscal year, and they don't. So, for instance, February of 2025 is in a different fiscal year than August of 2025. So that is how the payments were scheduled, so we're ahead by one at this point.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. So this year, the Plan Commission was able to grant all the requests of all the applicants to the amount they requested, besides, like you said, the WAVE program, which is a new first-year applicant. So we awarded them typically $1,000 to see if they could handle the requirements of the program, given there are some reporting requirements and everything.
Correct. Yes.
And this year, the Plan Commission recommended the same amount that administration was recommending, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
And we have, and like you said, we have a little bit of money to reprogram. Where did that money come from?
So the little bit of money that we have to reprogram came from two places. We had a little bit of money left in the senior center parking lot. We had just under $4,000 after that project was all said and done. And then we had $8,100 available from the public service organization Blessings in a Backpack. They found that it would be too difficult to track down the individual households that were receiving the benefit, and so they returned.
Yeah, to go back to the difficulty with the reporting.
Yes, which, exactly.
The federal government, I think we've discussed this a few times, have kind of ramped up some of the requirements, and it's difficult for some organizations to meet some mills or acquired.
That's correct. Yes.
And I like that we have the Kite Monroe ADA Playground in here. We've been wanting to do that for years and years and years and years, and unfortunately, due to some delays with other money, and we weren't able to do it. So I'm glad we'll finally be able to do that, finish off the playground updates that one is in total need of updating.
Oh, yeah.
And the fact that's going to be ADA universal design means a lot of kids will be able to, of different abilities, will be able to enjoy it.
Correct.
So I will move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Rusi. Who supported it down there? Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. I mean, CDBG's been, I mean, as she just said, we got the Kite Monroe. We've been able to do the parking lot over there at the senior center, bocce ball coming. It's been very good for the community. I know it has been good for 50 years, but just recently seems to be, been very good for the community. So we're appreciative of the more than $800,000 we receive on a yearly basis, and we have received it now here for more than 50 years. So it is, it's been a tremendous program and advantage for this community. So it's great to have. So thank you.
For sure. You're welcome.
Adoption of the Fiscal Year 25/26 Budget. John Walters.
Good evening once again. I'm here to answer any questions about the budget adoption. We had the workshop on April 28th. There was some feedback from all of you, which was incorporated. There was some more feedback. So I think all the pages were replaced in your, in your budget binders. The last group of questions or items to address were included in the packet here, so your budget binders probably need to be replaced with those pages. Included in your packet is also a schedule of the proposed changes. So the budget that was presented at the workshop showed a surplus of about $224,000 in the general fund. The biggest change since then was the ratification of the patrol contract, so that brought our surplus down to about $15,000.
That was one of my questions. So the $224 went to 15, and the majority of it was the ratification, please. Okay.
So if there's any questions, I'd be even more than happy to answer.
Questions? Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, not really any questions, but we did meet, because I had several items prior to last meeting when it got pulled. We did meet a week ago Thursday, Mr. Walters, Mr. Lent, and I went through them. I think one of the things that, going forward, is one change we're looking at as well, or actually, John brought up the idea, of how we deal with committees, is right now, that's one of the confusions of when we're allocating money to committees, how does that get tracked year after year when we're allowing them to save their balances, right? And that becomes a little difficult if it's all within the general fund. So he's going to look at creating the committees just as its own fund, so that way, when it's in the budget, if we, you know, allocate so much to a committee, it just gets transferred to that committee in that fund, out of the general fund, and that way, the accounting is kind of clean in the general fund, and everything's just tracked as its own savings account within a committee fund, and that going forward. So appreciate looking at doing that for the next year, and I think it'll really help clear up a lot of the paperwork and the finances for the committees that we go through every year. Also, to follow up on the motor pool projections, I just want to make sure we keep an eye on that, because we do have large purchases going in, and that's basically served as a capital account, right? So we got to make sure that that, there's funds there to pay for the large purchases that come out of there. And lastly, just to kind of go through what's really included in here, on top of the day-to-day operations, we do have in here to capital projects to repair the Blossom Heat Boat Ramp, as well as do sewer repair within that canal as well. We already talked about the Kite Monroe Playground. The bocce ball courts over at the senior center are going to get redone. In terms of streets, we previously approved the 10-mile Low Mac intersection to get repaired. A project from Greater Mac from 12 to 13 mile with the state, and basically do a patching or sectional replacement project all along for that mile. Repair the bridge at the Milk River and replace Playview, as well as another million dollars of sectional replacement of concrete scattered around the city. $300,000 for further alley replacements, the replacement of Shady Lane from Pallister to Harper. New patrol boat being funded both by grant and by drug forfeiture fund, new body, additional new body cameras, cart pass at the golf course, second page. Added generator to the water reservoir, based at the big water tank at 10 mile, buy concrete breaker, do a million dollars of meter replacements for home meters and for the water system. Water mains on Alexander and Cedar. Upgrade Pleasant Pump Station, upgrade the Alger Pump Station, and including a garbage truck that we're buying tonight, a new VAC and jet truck, new ambulances, utility snowplow narcotics vehicle, patrol vehicles, and additional pickups for DPW. So quite a bit in the budget, and it's good that it is still balanced, even with all that, all those capital items that are in there. So, but I do appreciate all the work that goes into it. It's a massive document, a lot of coordination that goes into it from not only finance staff, but all the department heads that basically start, they start the process basically around February or so, in terms of starting a meeting with City Manager's Office.
Yeah, it was going before I came, so.
Yeah, so it's a very long process, very big document, so I appreciate all the hard work that goes into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rubelo?
At least we're taking all this stuff head-on and not leaving it for someone else behind us, you know? So I think this has been a very aggressive city council, and on your recommendation, I will move, motion to approve a resolution adopting the FY20/26 Budget.
Support?
Support.
Oh, supported by Mr. Frederick?
You know the motions are longer, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Vitale?
Regarding Mr. Karen's proposed way that we're going to track committee funds, will we be made privy to the amount of money in each fund's bank account? We'll still know that?
Yeah, I don't think anything like that's going to change. It's just tracking it. Right now, it's in a department within the general fund, and it's a little bit hard to...
I agree, this is a better way to track it.
Good idea, Jan. Way to go.
Wanted to make sure we still be...
Absolutely. You'll be able to see in each department what the parade has, or what activities has, or what cities, you know, each one of those. Yes, for sure. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Seven to zero.
Budget done.
Item Nine is Request to Approve a Municipal Finance Advisor Engagement Agreement. This, of course, is the phase here, which is the next phase as we work toward issuing bonds for the police and fire capital building projects. for the police and fire capital building projects. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. That's well put. This is the next step. Council's already appointed a bond counsel, as well as instructed the clerk's office to publish a resolution of intent for this bond. Next thing we're doing now is bringing on the financial advisor to help guide us through this process. Included in your packet is their information, how we got to this point. We issued an RFP. We got three firms back on the issuance. We went through each proposal, actually also spoke with bond counsel as well. As you see in your packet, there's a letter from Pat McGowan, who serves as bond counsel for Miller Canfield. He looked at all three, said all three are very capable firms. They all do quite a bit of work in the states. Each would be a good selection for the city of St. Clair Shores. So as all things being equal, as we read through the packets, we also came to the conclusion that all three were very capable firms and then looked to maximum pricing to break that tie. The maximum price listed for MFCI, which is the recommended vendor, was $17,500. That's based on a full $5 million issuance of debt. As council's talked about, it will not likely be that high. So we looked to the cost per individual $1,000 of debt. MFCI was also the lowest in that regard as well. So for multiple different reasons, as outlined in my memo to the City Manager Lent, we humbly request council approve MFCI as our bond advisor to move forth through the scope of work as outlined in the RFP. Mayor would join this evening by representative from MFCI, Mr. Steve DeClaudio, who actually has experience with our previous firm who did this type of work for us. Both worked in the Tifa, as well as there was some other court bond as well for, has direct experience with capital improvement bonds for the city of St. Clair Shores, which was another nice perk of requesting the council approve this vendor. So that's the quick overview.
As recall, you already said Pat McGowan. Pat was not able to be here today, but Plaka Cooney has been doing this for a number of years. Most of us know that Mike Gormley had been here many, many times and had done many of the bonds in the past. Mike has retired, so this is where we got in this phase. We probably would have, in essence, probably Mike would have been here. But that's where we are here. So questions regarding this? Rubello?
I think we've been through this a few times with you. I don't have any, I don't have any questions at all. I just, I think we've been through this. I will make a motion to approve the municipal financial consultants based on the recommendation of this, of our city manager here, to serve as the city's municipal financial advisor and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreement in accordance with the terms of their proposal.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Ms. Burgess. Mr. Karen?
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm going to be voting no. It's not anything about your firm or anything. I'm against going into debt out of the general fund. So since this is all part of that, I'll be voting no. But it's nothing about your firm or anything that was in the quote package. I just wanted to let you know that.
Ms. Rusi?
Same, same as stated by Councilmember Karen.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two it passes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So Dustin, you will take, now continue to take the steps here as we move forward, right here. And as we, going to have to start moving this forward here and getting these bonds as we move forward here and getting these buildings. Says Fire Department is moving quite quickly. We're over 30%, I believe, in the last report. And so we'll move on that. So thank you with the, continuing the next steps here to get those bonds issued and get our police and fire building up and running and paid for. Item 10 is bids contracts purchase orders. Number 10A is requested, we have a number of them, so request to award the bid for chlorine pulsar tablets. Jeremy Schlosky, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here just bringing the request to award the bid for chlorine pulsar tablets. As you all know, last year, we brought our new pump house online at the pool. As part of the new design in the bid, the city moved away from using liquid chlorine and instead went with a safer chlorine tablet solution made by pulsar. We went with these because the tablets do not lose their potency and can be saved and used for the next summer, whereas previously, we discharged our remaining liquid chlorine into the pool at the end of the summer due to the loss of potency. During the course of this year, we recognized that we were going to extend the bid threshold as we spend $3,960 per month. And with the current market volatility, administration thought it would be best interest of the city to issue a competitive sealed bid for the fiscal year 2526. The sealed bid was sent directly to all three of the city's major pool contractors, as well as being placed on the bid net and advertising locally in the paper. The city only received one bid from Aquatic Source, which is our current provider. Administration recommends that council award the bid for pulsar chlorine tablets to Aquatic Source at the price outlined in their bid response. $165 per 50-pound bucket or $3,960 per pallet. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Ms. Rusi?
No questions concerning the bid documents, just thanks for administration for recognizing that the aggregate's going to mirror the bid threshold and for going out to bid on these. I think that's the way it should be done. So thanks for recognizing that and going through the process. I would move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Jeremy, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Item B is request to approve the police vehicle changeover contract and blanket purchase order. Sergeant Campbell, how are you?
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to request to award the 2025 to 2028 police vehicle changeover contract to ABS Storage Solutions, as well as approve our blanket purchase order for year one of three for the scout car buildups. I posted a RFP on BidNet back on May 9th and had a mandatory show-up for the companies at DPW on May 22nd. Bid opening was May 27th of the show-up and bids received, only ABS submitted, showed up and submitted. ABS has been with us as our buildup since 2019. Where, once we get through our last scout car, we're looking at 31 cars that they've built, and we've been happy, and they're consistent with their work. As for the proposal that I posted, everything was exactly the same as it was when I did the one back in 2022. Only thing different was the addition of the Ford Expedition that's going to be potentially added to our fleet during the three years of the contract. So I wanted to make sure we knew what the buildup would look like for that. So with that, I will take any questions.
Questions? Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. The budget in Pat states sits scout cars. That's how it was bid out. And we did receive estimates for sits vehicles from ABS, but the recommended motion states four patrol vehicles.
We are anticipating to purchase fours what we're budgeted at. But the way ABS presents their packet, they add up what it would cost to build every single one of those models into that. So that's where the 104 comes up with. The equipment cost by itself is about $99,000 for all the equipment. But the overall cost I'm estimating for the buildup, assuming nothing happens, that is not anticipated. I'm expecting it to be a little bit closer to about $80,000 with equipment.
I'm just wondering about the motion. Should we say four? Should we say sit? Should we just not state how many then and just?
Money.
Yeah, just state the amount between ABS and city of St. Clair Shores for the buildup of patrol vehicles and not state the number of vehicles then, if it could fluctuate.
Yeah.
Okay. And I will, I always appreciate the memos you provide. That helps understand the process that I went through and why this is needed, what they're going to do. So I always appreciate the thoroughness of the bid specs you put together and the packet for us. Sergeant Campbell, I will move to approve with the elimination of the specification of four patrol vehicles pursuant to the discussion we just had.
Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening yourself. 10C, request to approve UPM permanent pavement repair material contract and blanket purchase order. Mr. Babcock, Director of the DPW, good evening.
Morning, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a number of items. These are annual purchase orders that we put out for all the different purchases that we do at Public Works. There's a number here that are, we recently bid out this year. But then under consent agenda, there's a number of items that are multi-year bids that were awarded at a previous council meeting, and we're just asking for the blanket purchase order to be approved. So thank you to Councilperson Rusi. There was some stuff that I had missed on those clarifications on when, you know, the items were approved at previous meetings. So thank you for catching that. And I think we made all the corrections and hopefully we're good to go there. The first item here is for UPM. This is the cold patch material that we use to fill potholes. And after excavations, we use that to make a sealed surface on the top until we're able to replace the concrete. We had one bid this year, and it's the company that we had currently been using. And the unit price had actually dropped $5 per ton this year. So we're asking for approval.
Questions?
Move to approve.
Support.
By Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rubello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. 10D is to approve the DPW tree remover contract blanket purchase order.
So next item is for tree removals throughout the city. We have a contractor that assists us. We also have a forestry crew on staff, but we also utilize a contractor. This year, we had nine bids, so that was good to see. And we are recommending going with the low bidder, Wanzi Tree Service, who has worked for a number of years here in the city, but we've been very happy with their work.
Sure. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So I thought we were looking at sod in some, in a lot of these cases. We're just going to do grass seed based on this contract?
Yeah, grass seed, because if we put sod down right over something, we stump grind, you know?
No, not over the stump because we got to let that sink.
Yeah.
So we're still going to plant seed?
Yep.
And then go back and check it as it sinks down?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Ms. Burgess. All with Mr. Vitale. Question?
Is this, this contract strictly for tree removal? Do we also have a contract for trimming still in effect?
We have a separate contractor, Owen Tree Service, who is currently doing our tree trimming.
And that's one of our renewals?
Yes.
Okay. Just a subject on that, I happen to notice with the construction of the new car wash at 10 Mile and Harper, our street trees are actually touching their building, which then got me looking at a lot of other buildings along Harper. And there are a lot of other buildings being touched by our trees. So we should probably get those trimmed.
Will do. We typically, we would make our way up and down Harper before the crews. But if that's the case, then we can get out there soon and get.
Yeah, the roadway side kind of gets trimmed by semis, but the sidewalk side is definitely touching a lot of buildings in that area.
We'll check it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. 9E is request to approve the DPW tree stump remover contract and blanket purchase order.
So again, this is a contract to assist our forestry crew. We keep a list of the tree stumps that need to be ground, and then a contractor comes in, usually maybe three times a year, and goes through the list throughout the city and grinds the stump. And we have also, within the last few years, now started to do the lawn restoration as well, after the stumps are ground. So we're, on this bid, we're recommending going with the second lowest bidder, who, again, Wanzi Tree Service, who has been doing a nice job for us on this work as well.
Mr. Babcock, why not the low bidder, which is limb walkers?
We've, we've had them, and we've had some problems. They didn't bring out the necessary equipment to do the proper job. We think our residents are going to get a better, better quality job out of this contractor.
Mr. Rubello?
The limb walkers, you had a couple of problems, but we have used them before.
We have.
Okay. As well as, you know, Sterling cities have used them also. I mean, it's quite a big difference with the amount of the bid. And I know, I just, I talked to these guys today because I was wondering what the difference is. And they sort of told me what the issue was with what we were doing, you know, and the disagreement that we had and how they, they basically were asked to do from almost driveway to driveway, from the street to the sidewalk to clear out everything. And I think that was a little bit of the discrepancy. So I just liked the $4. They have worked with Wanzi before because I asked them in Sterling. With the clash of both the cities, with Sterling Heights and, and our city here in St. Clair Shores, they have worked together before because I was sort of interested, can they get on the same page? So I am, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we go with the lowest bidder. And I guess that would be in a form of a motion. And I just, I want to give these guys another try, and we can get rid of them at any time, right? If it's not working out, we can go to the, we can go to the lowest bidder.
Okay, so you, you, well, you want to make a motion, Mr. Rubello, for limb walkers?
I do.
Okay.
Just based on the lowest bid.
Okay. I'll just ask another question and just before we ask for support. The request was for a three-year contract. Would you like to make it for?
One year?
Yeah, one year and then come back and evaluate? And then if administration supports that, then we would, you know, a year from now?
So one year with the option for two?
For two years, yes. Would you like that? You do not have to take that. I'm just throwing that out there.
I think that's, I think that's a great option, Mayor. I just, you know, these other things, these other people have done stunts for us. We've had problems with them also.
Does anyone, everyone understand that that motion, as long as we do, then is there support for that motion?
I'll support that with a comment.
Support it? Okay.
Or I guess a question.
Well, you did support it, though.
Yeah, supported with a question.
And then the question, Ms. Rusi?
Yeah. So as limb walkers, they listed the golf course as one of their municipal references. Juve Service or Golf Course?
They have done work out there, and actually, I don't know if it's tree stump removal work. I would imagine they do street tree stumps. But I have spoken with Jeff, the superintendent out there, and he has been happy with their work.
Okay, great. I just wanted to double check that, given we have one department saying one thing. And I guess one department, at least their feeling's good enough on their work at the golf course to list them as a municipal reference, so.
Mr. Lent?
I would ask that if, if we go with the lowest bidder because of some of the issues that we had, if we could get, when we sign the contract, have Mr. Erie review that and give us a out clause that is favorable to us. That way, because when we're taking down trees and we're removing stumps, we want to see some, the residents want to see something quick, efficient, and clean. So this way, rather than just saying a year, I think I would, you know, I would make, if council would be okay, leaving it at the three, but giving us that out clause that we can cancel at a quick, you know, if need be, and we feel that they aren't living up to their obligations, we have an out clause immediately. Because I don't know why we'd want to just cancel it after a year if we feel that they were doing good. And if they're not doing good, we need to come back to council and let you know immediately.
So you, you want the three-year, but you want an out clause that's favorable to the city that we can get out? That's what you're asking for that?
Yes.
How does the maker and supporter feel like that?
I think that that's fine.
I think that's, that's sufficient. If there's an out clause, it kind of operates the same way.
Okay, okay. Ms. Burgess?
So if we decide to go with the lowest bidder and it doesn't work out, does that mean we have to do a bid out again because the second one might raise our prices? Or, I mean, they're not going to be locked into a bid?
I think in the past, we've gone back to the second to see if they honor that part of it. I think, I can't speak for them. I think many times they do. And I think that would be, at least, Ms. Burgess, I think that would be the start, to go back to the second one and see if they'll honor that thing. And if they do many times, you'll bring that back to us, and then we'll approve that. That's in the past how many times it's worked. Mr. Vitale?
I don't have a problem with voting for the low bid, but I will also say this. We're receiving these in, as a unit price of DBH inch, which is diameter breast high. I don't know how much money we're potentially saving the city by going with the low bid because I don't know how many inches breast high we grind every year. Is there a way you could include that in a future bid, you know, maybe give us some prior years? I mean, we're going a little bitter here, but I mean, if this ends up saving us $5,000, it isn't as important as if it was something that's going to save us $50,000.
I mean.
In principle, of course, I support. In principle, of course, I support the low bid, but.
Sure. But if it's 25, $35,000 and we'll say it's really less than half. I mean, you're somewhere in that $18,000, $19,000 savings, Mr. Vitale, if I'm taking the sheet. That's what I would say. It's 35,000 and $10 versus $4, so it's 18, $19,000.
Is that typical number that we grind every year?
Well, I'm just using the budget number, which he has, he's asking for 25,000 on one department, 10,000 on another. And if 10 is a little bit less than 50, more than 50%, I'm, I'm taking it that it's, it's up over, you know, 17,500. Makes sense?
It does it done that way, but it would still be nice to know what we're grinding.
Yeah, sure. He can send that out. Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So, one of the things that, that's in here on the, I think it's the second part of the bid with the emergency services stuff. And I know that they're, the Limwalkers are the lowest bid there. Did we have any trouble when we had needed emergency services for those guys?
We always include that item so that we have unit prices, but we typically don't use that. When we need an emergency stump grinding done, it's usually for like a water main break. And I mean, we, it's an emergency. It's like, we need to get it done now. Usually, these guys are out working for another city and they can't just pull off and come over. So, we do have some local people that are able to turn around within like usually the same day and help us out.
Got it. Okay. All right. Dave, thanks for doing the homework on that.
Mr. Rabello?
Just one other thing to add. The, because I, when I, when I called these folks up, they were, I noticed how they signed their contract was instead of 2024, or instead of 2025, they put 2024, but they said that 2025 was good. So, whatever paperwork, if this motion passed, whatever paperwork, they have to do to correct the 2024 to 2025. There's no problem.
Ms. Burgess?
Just one last question. Just was eating at me. You said that Wansey Tree Service does a better job in the past, less concern for residents. So, my only concern is, I mean, we've already get so many complaints from the residents. What was the problem with the lowest bidder before?
Well, I can tell you that the current contractor uses a machine to scoop out, remove the mulched up material, make room for a good amount of topsoil to be placed back down. Where the, the problem that we had before is they, they weren't showing up with a machine. They just would show up with bags of topsoil and they were throwing it down on the bare spots and throwing some grass seed down. And so, then we had a combination of some old root grinding, some bagged topsoil being thrown down. And that was a lot of the ones where we ended up having to get a lawn restoration contractor to come in behind them to, to correct the problem. So.
I just don't, I just wanna have another problem with residents.
I don't see how they can do it for this price, you know, to be honest with you, with the proper machinery and stuff to come in and do a quality job. That's why I just think for our residents, it's worth going with the second lowest bidder because of the jobs that I've seen and the number of complaints, you know, Councilman Karen, you've seen a lot of the problem ones that we've had. It's, it was not a good quality job.
The current is a motion on, on the floor regarding that. Mr. Vitale?
Is Limwalker the contractor we at one time used for cutting down trees?
Yes.
Is it the one that I'm thinking of that dropped one on our street?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, then I'm a no.
Mr. Rabello?
Brian, I respect your opinion first of all, but I think problems happen with any type of contractor that's doing this type of work. And I'm sure we've had problems with the contractor that we're using right now because I've had, filled plenty of phone calls from residents and with the mounds and all that type of stuff and it's not sinking. And the issue that they had is what, they were led to believe that, okay, they come in and they do the, they do the stump, not knowing that the whole boulevard sometimes would need to be done. And I think they ran into some issues with us like that. So, that's what they, they told me. I'm willing to try them again at that lowest price. I think that works too good for, that also works good for the residents. Does someone drop a tree on something once? I'm sure, I'm sure we're not the only town that they've cracked the sidewalk or a street or something like that. So, I am, I'm, I'm happy with giving them a try and we added the out to it too.
Good.
And we'll see how, we'll see how it works.
Moved by Mr. Rabello, supported by Ms. Rusi. Again, it is to agree with the three-year contract, but to, to work with the city attorney administration to get an out clause in case that there are issues that we have. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Five to two, it passes. Thank, thank you. So, Mr. Lett, you'll, you'll take charge of that, correct?
Yes.
I'll work with Mr. Erie.
Make sure we're going, because it's a little different with the out clause and I'll take care of that.
So, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, yeah. I was just gonna read it. 10F is to, request to approve the DPW water sewer repair supply contract blanket purchase order.
So, this is for all the various items that we use in sewer and water to, you know, repair pipes, repair manholes, all, all the different parts that we, we use. So, we put this bid out annually. I don't think it's feasible to have a multi-year for this one. So, it's, it's usually always an annual bid and then we break the items into different sections. And so, we're requesting to split up the award to the three lowest bidders in the various sections. And then we split the dollar amounts as shown on the cover page.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. So, you did one of my most favorite things that I've always asked for and that is split the bid. Let's take advantage of the best pricing in each category. Well done. Brian, I would, I would make a motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Karen. Question, Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just emphasizing that there is the corrected PO on the table. That's per the approval versus when the packet, they just had the two budget numbers allocations switched in the PO that we had versus how it should have been.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Seven to zero, thank you. It passes. Item G is approve a motor pool vehicle and equipment tires contract blanket purchase order. Mr. Babcock?
So, this is for our mechanics over in the motor pool that, and all the tires that we need for all the various equipment. We have, you know, smaller everyday tires and then we have the larger, you know, fire truck and dump trucks and, and that. So, so we're asking for this one to actually split the bid and give a section of the purchasing to a company called RHD out of Warren, who was the low bidder. And it's a new company for us, but we, we, we think that they, I mean, they gave us the lowest price, but there's certain things that they can't do. They can't handle the bigger, larger vehicle tires. They don't have a mobile service. Sometimes we need that for the bigger ambulances and that. But the biggest thing is if, if they can get us tires for these larger vehicles, it could take two to three days. So, we don't want a fire truck or an ambulance, you know, sitting around waiting for tires. And Leslie Tire, which is right up I-94, they're able to, they stock those larger tires. So, we're able to go up there and get them same day. So, for that reason, we're asking to, to split the purchase order here between the two companies.
Mr. Rabello?
That's great, Brian, with the splitting stuff. It seems to work out good. So, on your recommendation, I would make a motion to award the 2025, 2026 vehicle and equipment tire contract and blanket purchase order to RHD Inc. and the annual amount of $30,000 and Leslie Tire Inc. in the amount of $30,000.
I'll support.
Ms. Rusi? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. 10H is request to approve the motor pool automotive parts contract and blanket purchase orders. And then Brian, right after, we're gonna do K while you're up there. So, we don't, you don't have to come back up, okay?
Okay. Sorry, Rob. So, this item, this is again at Motor Pool, the auto parts that our mechanics use. And again, the low bidder on this one is a newer company for us. Well, we have used them for years. They're a good quality company, but as far as getting the blanket purchase order, this is a newer company for that. But we've been satisfied with their parts and their service. So, we're recommending to go with the low bidder for both automotive parts and batteries, which is a basic truck and trailer on 11 Mile in Warren, Michigan.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just a quick correction on the PO that I didn't catch. The first time I read, it says other purchase of automotive parts and batteries approved at a council meeting today. Actually, should be contract and blanket purchase order like it has on the other ones. We are approving the purchase, but technically, we are approving BPO, not the purchase, as well as the contract. So, we should change that language. But other than that, move to approve.
Support. Moved by Ms. Rusi, supported by Mr. Rabello. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. We'll go to 10K there. Last one for Mr. Babcock. Request to approve the garbage truck purchase.
So, this is something that was included in its, the fiscal year 2026 budget and that is to purchase a garbage truck. We currently have one. We used to have a big fleet of garbage trucks, but then when we stopped collecting, I think one just hung around. And we've kept it going for a long time. It's a 2001, but it's, it's definitely not a reliable truck. You know, there's been a lot of times over the past year especially where we've wanted to send that truck out and it's just, it's not reliable and it's time to get a new one. You know, when we use it, we don't collect garbage, but we, like, you know, daily, but we use it at special events. We use it at the social districts. We use it at the DPW to collect items from the residents. They're able to bring, on Long Mondays, they can bring a truckload of whatever it is that they need to get rid of to the DPW. So, it is a truck that's used and this will be funded out of the rubbish fund.
I think more, more than ever, we need this truck with, which we have regarding some of the issues that we have going on with, currently with priority. So, we do need a reliable truck and so. Questions? Mr. Vitale?
Well, just one thing. I think the whole idea of purchasing a garbage truck, I can actually remember this conversation taking place with the city manager. And it started with some of the problems we have with priority where I said, is our, is our, can our current garbage truck go pick up garbage? And he said, well, probably might not come back again. So, I'm glad we moved forward on this because things don't really seem to be improving a whole lot. So, this garbage truck might get used. The only other question I had was, is the problems that we're having with the current garbage truck, is it relate to its ability to travel? And I know it's gotta go to the transfer station at 12 Mile. What are we gonna do with it? Are we selling it? Are we gonna keep it around just to crush things on Long Mondays or?
You know, we've, we've had to have that thing towed back to the yard quite a few times. I, I think really it's time to just auction it off.
So, it's gonna go to auction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Frederick?
Yeah, that was my question too. What are we doing with it? I mean, it's a, it has a 12-year life expectancy and we're at 24 and a half years right now. So, I think we got our money out of it. Obviously, totally depreciated it. So, I, you know, I'm all for getting, getting this truck and, and then, you know, let's, let's keep an eye on, on how this particular version works. And, and how, how does the size of this truck compare to like what priority uses in our city, the new one?
It's, it's about the same size, maybe a little bit smaller, but it's about the same size.
Okay.
Not, it's not like a small truck. Sometimes you see in other cities, they have the small trucks. It's not that.
Okay. All right.
And again, we, we needed this vehicle whether we, even without the issue with priority. We, we needed this vehicle.
Absolutely.
And if you sometimes see it, I mean, I got a little bit more with, with just even watching it at the social district now it comes. I mean, it, it's, it's in bad shape, very, very bad. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Another correction on the purchase order. Check any bots if applicable. Right now, it's checked other purchase of the garbage truck approved at the mean. This is also based upon another entity bid with source. Well, correct. So, we should be emphasizing that given we didn't bid this out. We're using consortium type pricing.
Yes.
So, and when it's used at the social district, do we get any sort of reimbursement for that?
I don't think specifically for the garbage truck, but we're charging them for the whole services that we have. So, DPW is included in, in the monthly, yes.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Rabello?
I think, Brian, thanks for getting this on here. Anything to do with some relief as far as garbage trucks? Even though I think we should make sure the people listening to us, listen, all of us up here know, we got problems getting the garbage picked up on time. Not one of us does not know that. So, we are making some type of, I don't know if the council, are you still investigating some options that we have with the garbage services?
Yes, he, he is and actually Mr. Lent is, is working to have a meeting with them too.
Okay. I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that anyone listening knows that this garbage truck we're buying, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, this is not gonna always be available to zoom out to a location to pick something up because the people that are operating these, you know, they may have been busy doing something else. I don't know if you can expand on that a little bit?
Yeah. So, the employees that would be operating this truck, that's our forestry department. That's our, the guys that are filling potholes, sweeping the streets. So, no, it's, it's not my intention for us to be in the garbage collection business, but.
This might be able to be used in a, in a case that it's, it's available, first of all, to be used. So, we get a lot of calls up here. I'm not just giving you an example. 22, 22013 Trombley calls and says, hey, these guys haven't picked my garbage up in three days, four days. That doesn't mean we're gonna just take the garbage truck and zoom out there and get their stuff. If it's available, we can do it. If it's not available, we can't. So, I just wanna make sure everybody knows that. And we are doing, and we're doing everything we can to try to figure out the garbage and the issues that we've all experienced with garbage and, and recyclable not being picked up. So, and Mayor, you're right. I saw that at the social district, the garbage truck. I almost didn't know what it was.
Just, just a couple of comments. I know Mr. Lent, he's got his pencil too. Just to, that, that, you know, we, we need this vehicle no matter what and, and, because that, that vehicle doesn't work. Number two, we expect priority who gets 3 million, more than $3 million a year to pick up our trash and do their job, which they're not. And we're not the only community. Doesn't make it good for St. Clair Shores, but we're not the only community having, in distress over, over, over garbage. And finally, one, one truck doesn't equal how many trucks you need. I mean, we, we're at eight to 10, I think, in, in most days to pick up your, your, your garbage in St. Clair Shores five days a week. So, I mean, it's, it's a whole service of trucks that you need to get this, to get this project done. So, one is really nothing to the whole getting this project or trying to pick up on St. Clair Shores. Mr. Lent?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I mean, you, Mayor, you hit it right on the head. We started talking about this garbage truck two years actually before priority had even kind of bought out GFL and took over. And some of the rationale was because the truck is extremely old. It isn't making it to the dump at all times. It does do the lawn or the, the Mondays. It also does the social districts. It also does when we have residents that throw out, clean out their entire apartment after a rental or do complete clean outs, which they're not supposed to do. We give them a violation. We come over and we pick it up and then we issue that back to them. So, and then also unfortunately, when we do have some of the, you know, if we, if we have to assist at any time, we have that truck out there that can assist. But it is not going to be a day-to-day. It is not gonna be priority missed my trash. We're gonna send this out. We do not have a full-time trash company. However, it does give us the backing that if we are significantly falling behind, it will allow us to go out and we will be seeking damages from priority. So, it does give us that flexibility. That is not our intent. Our intent is to use the vehicle as intended.
Mr. Karen?
Thank you. Yeah, I would just, kinda just add additional rationale for the purchase. You know, in the past, when we've had Mother Nature, you know, do its thing, I think our past company, you know, whether it's GFL or even Rizzo or even going back to Waste Management, if there is a street where there's like maybe multiple basements flooded way back when, we can rely on them to go out and do special pickups within the next day or two days or something like that. And I don't think we're gonna see that with the current company. They're just, just don't have the wherewithal right now to figure that part of it out. So, another reason why we shouldn't have this, but keep in mind, you know, even though we do everything we know can do to prevent basement backups, which can cause a lot of trash. cause a lot of trash really quickly if it happens, sometimes Mother Nature wins. And so this is important to have a working truck that can go out there and do that. I think we did have like one street last year where that was, we needed to go out there to help clean up that street. So another reason why we need a reliable truck, you know, on top of all the other events and Long Mondays and things like that that we do.
Mr. Vitale?
Yeah, just one other thing I remember from my conversation with the city manager. We talked about that this truck, this theoretical truck at that point would be very lettered up and graphics so people knew this was a city of St. Clair Shores truck.
Yes.
That's probably not, this is just the purchase price. Is that something our sign department can cut graphics for this thing? Or so people know this is a St. Clair Shores truck?
We have a company that we use that'll do the labels for us.
Okay. We don't need anything additional in this? Is that something that?
No, it'll be a different, different vendor.
Okay.
And it's usually not that expensive.
Yeah, we'll be good with it.
Okay.
Here.
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve the purchase of a new McNeilius garbage truck from a Queen Group, the amount of $260,700.
Support of Mr. Rubello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry, just with the correction.
With the correction.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Babcock. Go back to 10I. His request to award the golf course carriage house roof replacement bid. Parks and Rec Director, Robert Spinazzola.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Here tonight to request your approval to award the golf course carriage house roof bid to City Roofing in the amount of $31,500 with a 10% contingency for a total award amount of $34,650. This was originally brought to you on December 2, 2024, and it was tabled. After it was tabled, we went back into the bid documents and removed any specific mention of the original company who did the bid specs. We also changed the specs to reflect only a six-foot underlayment going around the roof instead of on the entire roof as the original bid specs called for. Bids were open May 27. We did have 13 bids. If approved, City Roofing can start in seven to 10 days. And we did talk to the city of Dearborn, who they've done municipal work for prior, and they said they were attentive, on budget, on time, and cleanliness was a plus for them. So we are not going to be doing the shelters on the course. We have some other plans for those locations. And I don't believe we're going to be looking into the gutters or anything like that. Those were in good shape as we, when we last checked, so.
Okay. Mr. Carron?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Carron, supported by Mr. Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10J, his request to approve the Parks and Rec Department to switch to the Civic Rec Point of Sale software.
Yeah, so our current software provider, Rec Pro, is going to Sunset on December 31, 2025. The company was sold to another company, and after they had met in-house, they decided that they were just going to absorb that and no longer support it. So this process really kind of started January 2024, which gave us plenty of time to review new software solutions. Two most important things to us for functionality and transition, I put together a small team of folks within the Parks and Rec Department, myself, Jason Harms, Matt Hubinski, Isla Klein, and Donna Hill. We demoed six different softwares after we eliminated numerous others at that point. From there, we did narrow it back down to three that we thought fit our department. And those three were Civic Rec, Rec Desk, and Community Pass. From there, we did do additional demos with them. In the end, as a team, we felt that Civic Rec offered the best system in terms of the goals that we set forth for us. This would also allow us to transition the current card system that we have, which we just implemented about a year ago, into the new system. So that was, that's a huge plus for us. Residents should have some familiarity with the Civic Plus look and design. Users would be able to use their usernames that they have now on our city website, would translate right over into the rec software. And then for this first fiscal year, though, we are going to have to ask for an increase. We put $25,000 in the budget, but with implementation and training, the first fiscal year would be $32,048.2. Second year, that would reduce because we wouldn't need the training and implementation costs again. I put in there a whole list of other communities that do use the software, most notably by us, two of the gross points in Roseville. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. I appreciate the thoroughness of the process you guys went through to make sure we were able to contract with the best fit for the personnel and also our residents. I have, I reading the list of the team conquering this. It's kind of like the Parks and Rec Avengers. So it's pretty cool. Question on the recommended motion, though, it just is right now to approve the Parks and Rec Department to switch. Do we need to put, approve the PO, the purchase itself, and maybe a budget amendment in there? Because right now it's just to approve the switch.
Mr. Lent?
It would be to approve the switch, and we don't have a purchase order, but it would be for the purchase order.
Yeah, we have a purchase order.
It would be approve the purchase order. It's, I mean, the budget, it's just passed. It is such a, it's $7,000 over on this one line item. This line item is pretty large for the recreation. I wouldn't recommend it this time. If need be, we can always do that as our first quarter budget amendments and bring it back, but I don't think at this time it would be needed.
Okay, yeah, because we do have the purchase order.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, cool. Question, though, Civic Plus is our current provider of the city website. I know we've discussed potentially when that contract is up, exploring other opportunities out there. If we were to change that, would we be able to still utilize Civic Plus for parts and rec stuff if we want to?
Yeah.
Or would we, that, so that could be a totally independent decision for the city website, that we're not tying ourselves further toward relationship with Civic Plus?
No, we're not tying in any further with them on the website part or the civic clerk part of it.
So that can operate independently, if we do go to a different provider?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Rubello?
Thanks, Rob. Very, very thrilled. That was great. The only question I have, I just wanted to make sure as far as the training of all this, you got that all set up?
So upon approval tonight, I'll immediately contact Civic Rec, probably tomorrow. We'll start that implementation process, starting with the new fiscal year. The goal would be to go live October 1, because that's when they're planning to end support for Rec Pro. Rec Pro will still work, but the support part of it will end on September 30.
All right, thank you. With that, I will move to approve the Parks and Recreation Department to switch to the Civic Rec Point of Sale software. Roberto will Spinazzola's.
And approve the purchase order.
And approve the purchase order.
What's that?
And approve the purchase order.
Approve the purchase order.
And approve the purchase order.
That's for it, Rob.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Ms. Burgess. Mr. Carron?
Thank you. Yeah, Rob, I think, great job going through this. But I also know this is going to be a major change for the department and getting to know new software with multiple people, especially with a lot of part-time staff as well. It'll take a lot of training, a lot of conversion. So I appreciate you taking on the task to do that. Not that you have a choice. You have one other software going away.
Not the ideal time.
Yes. But maybe one thing, as you're going through this, to think about, because kind of going back to the Civic Plus website software, I know like when I went to try to buy, you know, it took a while to get set up to do the brick fundraisers, you know, for, through the city website for the library. And the transaction was quite clumsy when I did it. So, so maybe there might be an opportunity as you go through this transition of maybe when we have something that's a point of sale from the city, maybe it's best it all, even if it's a different department, maybe it's best to go through Parks and Rec with an official point of sale software rather than some of the other things that we've been trying to do behind the scenes.
For sure.
At, you know, whether it's, you know, fundraising bricks, you know, garbage carts, things like that, things that people are buying, you know, might be easier just to get it through a Parks and Rec site and then have a, you know, available at the cashier's office to use for other sales or something like that. So appreciate that.
Moved by Mr. Rubello, supported by Ms. Burgess to approve the switch to Civic Rec Point of Sale software along with the additional purchase order. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. It passes.
Thank you, everybody.
10L is request to approve the Civic Center West Parking Lot Reconstruction. City Engineer, Mike Freckleton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We are looking to do improvements to the Civic Center, I guess more accurately, Southwest Parking Lot, as well as the newly appointed Civic Center Drive that is adjacent to it. The, this project will consist of repaving the parking lot and the drive, adding some new dumpster pads and enclosures, and storm sewer improvements that will take the storm sewer, storm water from the lot and move it into the SEMSD detention basin. We opened bids last Tuesday. We received five. We gave the options of concrete paving or asphalt paving. Best Asphalt Incorporated came in with the low bid on both of the paving materials. We are recommending that we go with their concrete bid of $787,962.46 with a 10% contingency, making that $866,759. This is mainly because the new senior center parking lot that we just did was in concrete, and it is, to my knowledge, our intention to do the main Civic Center Parking Lot in concrete when that time comes as well. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So a couple of things here. I do want to, one, as Mike Freckleton mentioned, the SEMSD will be captured on the storm water. That was actually a great thought by the SEMSD when they were building it, to be able to make that detention pond big enough to be able to take the water from that Southwest Parking Lot. I also want to say too, one of the main reasons that we are looking to do concrete is there is a lot of vehicles that actually cut through that parking lot to get through Stevenson's, whether it's a DPW vehicle. Our police, or sorry, our fire department actually does training over there as well.
A lot of commercial vehicles.
Construction and commercial vehicles that are coming from industrial drive that tend to cut through. So there's a lot of heavyweight vehicles that are on that area, as well as because of the concrete, or because of the construction that happened at the SEMSD. They did have a lot of commercial vehicles that was going through there. There was a lot of wear and tear on that drive lane that was going through, a lot of curbs that kind of got some damage. The SEMSD has approved at their board level to approve 25% just of that road, nothing to do with the parking lot, but of that road has been approved through the SEMSD. Once we, we have the prices, but once it's broken out of saying, here's what the road is, that will go back to the SEMSD, and then we will get that check cut to us. So there will be some money that we will be receiving. And as Mike said as well, I think when we get to the larger parking lot, I'm not necessarily saying that, hey, it's going to be concrete. I think we are going to need to make sure we keep a concrete drive aisle that continues on from that road to Stevenson.
Stevens.
Stevens, sorry. But I wouldn't say that necessarily we are tied in to having concrete in that area. But stating right now, the difference of the 645 to the 787 for an additional $140,000 to be able to say we're going to get concrete, which is usually holds up about two times as long as asphalt, I think it's financially a better approach at this time to go with the concrete. I would also state as well, with the timeliness of this, ideally, we would like to have brought this to you in July. However, right now, the ice arena is at its lowest attendance with summer being here. As you guys are all aware, hockey really starts their season soon after Labor Day, but they have the grand opening for the Hockey Association. That parking lot is busy and full. We want to try to be able to utilize this summer to be able to get it done. They are anticipating starting soon after the 4th of July, and we would have all the concrete, the contract books and everything, the pre-construction meeting happening before the July 4th, and then the construction will be able to start right after. And then, once we do get to the big parking lot, we still now have the small parking lot that we can actually park in and kind of offset whenever we do get to that big parking lot.
Mr. Frederick?
Thanks, Mayor. The, my question was going to be, can this be done by hockey opening day? That was going to be my question.
The substantial completion date in the contract is September 30. So we are anticipating on having this completed by then.
All right. So I guess just being on topic, being aware, if we run into any kind of weather problems, delay, just so that everybody knows what's going on there.
Yes, we would, you know, if we do have any conflicts, we would just have to work around schedules.
Okay. And I would move to award the Civic Center West Parking Lot Reconstruction Project to Best Asphalt Inc. in the amount of $866,759, which includes a contingency for concrete construction.
Support. Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Rubello. Ms. Rusi?
Thank you. Just another quick PO correction. Right now, we have an extra entity bid project in BidNet. That's an other entity bid. That's if we do a consortium pricing or things like that. If we do it through like BidNet or something, that's us controlling the bid. So it's on other entity, it's our entity. So we can just put that on other, maybe, you know, contract approved at the council meeting or something. But yeah, other entities for if we utilize Sourcewell or some other type of consortium bidding, but we're not putting the bidding out ourselves. It's another entity that we're just piggybacking onto that bidding.
In this instance, I mean, we, we put this on BidNet ourselves, and we did that.
Correct. That's why it's not other entity bid. That's us entity bid, other entity bid, is if we're, if we're part of a consortium or another group puts out a bid, and we're piggybacking on the pricing that they receive, but we're not bidding it out ourselves, given this is a project we bid out ourselves, that would not be an other entity bid. That's our entity bid.
Gotcha, understood.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Item 11, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Carron, supported by Mr. Rubello.
Yep, with the PO changes that were.
PO changes that were sent out.
On the desk.
Can I pull H real quick just to order the?
Which one?
H.
H, okay.
Just have a couple of questions. I know Denise is not here, but.
Okay, let me just.
Go ahead.
Pull it, I'll go back to you, okay? All in favor, except with the changes, with the PO changes, and pulling out 11H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Request to approve the Metro Act Permanent Application from Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Questions for that from Mr. Frederick?
I was just going to ask, is this going to be above ground or below ground on this? Do we know?
I don't know that one. I am sorry.
I think, I think it, I think they were putting it on top of some of these canisters. That's what I thought.
Is that what it is? And then, then we will be, we should be reimbursed at so much per mile?
Yes.
Yes.
Either it's above ground or underground, we'll get reimbursed.
So can you, can you just give us, get to us what that's going to be?
Yes.
At the end of the day. So I would move to approve this.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Frederick, supported by Mr. Carron to approve 11H. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And Mr. Lentz, you get with Denise and have her send an email regarding that, to the two questions, where they are and how much. Item 12 is updates and files for prior meetings. Mr. Lentz?
Ms. Rusi requested that Communication Department work with Sarisa to include information in the city newsletter. The Communications Department has reached out to Tony Lees, and he said he would send us information to go into the newsletter, social media, and the website. Ms. Rusi asked the library to review and simplify the language using the library program flyer. The flyer is actually being reviewed, and I believe Ms. Rusi has got those changes to Ms. Fair, and they are finalizing the flyer, and it'll be out very soon. Ms. Rusi noted typographical errors in the zoning ordinance amendments. Those were corrected prior to posting and prior to the submission to the Muni code. Ms. Rusi pointed out that the final paragraph referencing ordinance posting locations should reflect the temporary police and fire building addresses. Those have been corrected. Mr. Frederick asked that the water bills have more information to explain the annual slash quarterly changes for the commercial, sorry, charges for the commercial buildings. To enhance clarity for commercial users, we would need to break out and clearly define several key components on the bill. The surcharge, the water, the wastewater flow charge, and possibly the different charges according to meter size for commercial readiness to serve charges. One challenge we're facing is space. The back of the bill is already full, and we've previously received feedback that shrinking the text too much makes it difficult to read, something that was a common concern before the redesign. Please let us know how you would like to proceed. I can see what it would cost to shrink the text and add those items in, or we could wait until the vendor's one-year contract is up in five months to incorporate the changes as part of the RFP and explore ways to present this information clearly without sacrificing readability.
readability. We have also included a copy of the back of the water bill as attached.
Dustin, can I comment? I mean, one of the things was, I think, a lot of the businesses got a separate bill for the stormwater charges. So that's a completely separate bill that did not have all that extra stuff on the front and the back and all that. So maybe that, if, if we at least take that bill that we send out once a year, all right, and, and explain, this is what this is for, all right? Because you have all this cement, you have less grass, whatever it is, all right? And that may, that may solve the problem.
Perfect.
Okay.
Ms. Rusi requested follow-up on the cost-sharing agreement with Macomb County for ten-mile Little Mac intersection. She questioned the accuracy of the cost, which is only one dollars off from AEW's two thousand twenty-three estimate, and noted the lack of contingencies and blank fields in Exhibit A. She requested further clarification. The county has clarified that they used the city's cost estimate from AEW to draft the agreement. Once the agreement has been approved and deposit is provided, they will proceed with a survey, a survey design work. The county has decided to bid this work as a standalone project rather than including it in their countywide pavement repair projects. They feel we would get a better job since it is an intersection and will require further, require some specialized work. They explained their pavement repair project is set up for smaller concrete repairs. Once a project is bid out and they construct it, the city will be responsible for our share of the actual costs. It is under the estimate, they will provide a refund. If it is over the estimate, we will be responsible to pay our share.
Thank you for looking into that. I think I know which one it's going to be, so, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Frederick reported cracking on the concrete sidewalk ramp near Jefferson Middle School and requested repairs. CDI Director and City Engineer walked the area around Jefferson Middle School and only found one instant of cracking in a curb, which would not warrant removal and replacement. More information is needed, so I know they probably are thinking of reaching out.
Was that Jefferson Middle, or was that the ten-mile?
That was the Jefferson Middle School.
All right, I think it was the ten-mile area, the ten-mile in Little Mac, not eleven in Little Mac. I think we're using Jefferson, people were, kids were going, would be walking to Jefferson even from that area. So, I mean, the walking to Harmon, all, all the different schools, but I think that it was the ten-mile in Little Mac area that had the, it actually said that it was, it was some problem with it in what we passed last week, our last meeting.
Mr. Karen asked if nine G is on the Macomb County's agenda for approval. It was sent to the county and it was added to the agenda, and so that was completed. Mr. Vitale asked to send a letter to the state requesting the winter tax bill acceleration threshold be raised from one hundred dollars to two hundred. An email was sent out to Myzong and a letter was also mailed to the Michigan Department of Treasury, as well as Kevin Hurtel. Copies on both are attached. I will also say, later on Friday afternoon, we actually got a response back from Maya Young's office saying they are looking into it and they might be taking that fight up for us.
Great, and that should be an easy one.
And then, Ms. Rusi asked for an update regarding priority waste. She said it might be time for us to pursue other contractual remedies because we are not getting the service we pay for. A copy of the draft letter is attached, once reviewed, it will be updated and sent out. Mr. Karen, I also.
Oh, and I had sent a, an email about that too, this morning.
And I also want to state as well, with this, we have also reached out to Dan Vane. As many of you guys probably can see, we have had a change in quite a bit of our, say, LDC representatives that are now the logistics coordinators. As part of this process, they're adding more logistic coordinators to our team, that way you're going to be able to see more. They do ask, and I think you guys, some of you guys got a response from Dan Vane, to make sure we're using the LDC because that actually then spearheads to every single one of the individuals. However, I, we, I mean, should we keep copying every one of their contacts as well? But the goal is, is to try to make sure that we are getting the remedies faster and in a quicker time. I would also say, talking to Dan Vane, they are in the final stages of receiving fifty more garbage trucks. Now, this is obviously is not just for us, this is for a lot of their communities. They are still continually having truck issues, as long, as well as, I mean, I could go on, wait times at some of the transfer stations, they're also looking to change where they're taking some of the trash for some of the transfer locations, to be able to be, expediate the process of their trucks being out and coming back. But we are working with a lot of remedies right now in the process with priority in a multiple facet of ways right now.
Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. I'll please keep us updated, as you can see, because I put you on these emails I send too.
Yes.
I know personally, I'm spending about an hour a day following up on priority stuff, and I assume that applies to all of us up here.
At least an hour.
At least, yeah. And it's a little frustrating to be told after you're shooting off all these emails, the one response you seem to get is, oh, you emailed us wrong, put, send it to this address. It's like, okay, how about you forward it to that address because we're paying you three million dollars a year? And, yeah, I don't want to be sending these emails either, and the solution to that is to do better service and I won't be bothering you with these emails. And then, there you go, life will be good because it's just very frustrating. So I will put, I will send them to whoever can get the residents the results they're looking for, but taking a step back, it's a shame we have to send emails in the first place because this should be done without having us to intervene and say, hey, you forgot Brighter Cliff, hey, you forgot this, hey, you picked up half the street here but not this other half, hey, you didn't get this, hey, this resident has had garbage, literal garbage out there for three days and you haven't done anything. Because these are residents we're hearing from who decide to email us and reach out or who post on Facebook. There's a lot of people out there who just look at their trash, still on the curb, shake their head sadly and take it back that we never hear from, and that's a shame too.
That is correct.
So, we need to, you know, keep getting updates on this because this is absolutely taking up too much of everyone up here's time, and it's taking up too much of our residents' time too, to have to go through extra contractual remedies on their own to get their trash picked up, it's ridiculous.
I completely concur, and I can tell you that frustration from each and every one of you that we hear as administration is being passed on to that vendor, and as you guys are all aware, this contract is coming up, they have also been well aware that we are in the process of just purchasing a garbage truck and that we are not satisfied at all with, for our residents with the service that we've been provided.
Yeah, I would hope that message has gone through by now.
I hope so as well. But like I said, I would at least say, within the last week, we've been getting more answers, whether they're excuses, answers, but I would say the step in the right direction is they're applying more LDC drivers, there, or not drivers, more control people in the control room to be able to make sure these issues aren't missed and make sure the trucks are getting back out, finding the spots and picking those up. As well as, I know it's a big hurdle to try to find new dump stations and working with new dump stations to be able to try to make that turnaround quicker and be able to come back. So that's one of the big steps as well.
One of the things I'm thinking about is the fact that if people are utilizing this LDC-type email address because they think that they can, you know, send out the reports better, they must be aggregating and accumulating these reports, I'd be interested to know when how many they're receiving from St. Clair Shores, be it from a council member or be it from a residence, a week. I would like to know how many complaints they receive. Because I know how many I receive, and I assume it's a whole lot more than that than the people who are just posting on Facebook I happen to see, or people who email me that I happen to get, so I would be interested. I would be super interested to know that, especially as we're anticipating, talking about a new RFP and going through that process. Thank you.
Mr. Karen.
Thank you. So, do we, outside of Mr. Vane, who's a VP, do we have a dedicated service rep just for St. Clair Shores? Because I, I'm at the point of where I have to send something in, I just went and found ten different emails at alsopriority.com.
Yep.
And just send it to everybody and see who replies. And I think there's one gentleman that has been replying, maybe that's him, I don't know because he doesn't have a title on his email. I, I think that would help, just so we know, like, you know, for example, each time the person replied back, we'll get on it, I don't get the confirmation it was actually done, I'm assuming it got done. So we get a little more of their hierarchy of who's supposed to be doing what, you know, since, you know, unfortunately, Don passed away.
Yes.
Because he was our go-to guy for years.
Yep, so, there, and I'll, I'll provide that information, but is there LDC coordinators that are in charge? Michael used to be our individual, I think he probably, Michael Berger, who was on there, we had sent stuff to all the time. He is since, I'm not sure if he had left or got moved to a different city, and it was just one person.
Well, no, his email doesn't work anymore, so.
I'm guessing it's probably, I wasn't going to assume, I don't know what happened there. But they have added an additional people, so there's more than one representative for our municipality now. They're all monitoring that same one. And then there is a, as part of next week's meeting with Dan, there is an additional training where they've started creating a software program where we would have access to go in, see how many complaints are being issued, how many complaints come in per day, and to make sure that if any of the councils' emails that are being sent to that one location are all being documented and saved and who sent them in. So, that program is up and running, we're supposed to get trained on that here, I said, in the very near future, and hopefully that also helps fix a lot of these issues.
Who at the city is going to be responsible for looking at that?
So, we're going to have multiple people in there, myself, Brian, Brian has a few of his office assistants that'll work on it, Carmen, Matt, so basically DPW staff and Carmen, but myself and Matt want to be trained just so we can make sure that we also are documented from council.
At the start, it'd be the leadership positions to be looking at it regularly.
Yes.
Before it goes down to staff.
And that's why me and Matt are on that meeting as well.
Well, no, but it, it's, it's not for you guys just to go take a look or take a peek, but to rarely monitor, to really start to understand what type of data is out there to start to fix the issues.
Yep.
And that, because, you know, because I think unfortunately, in one of the emails from the VP was, oh, he's been sending stuff to our staff. And it turns out, well, yeah, she got like two, and then we ended up getting, and we, we demanded, no, send it to the city manager's office. It's like, all of a sudden, we got eight within two weeks of late pickups and things like that, so, so really, to get a real handle of it, the leadership needs to take the, take the lead. And actually understand the data and what's going on. And also, kind of looking forward, Matt and I had this conversation last week of, if we get into a situation, you know, for example, we've had like eight times in the last two weeks where they ran late and we, you know, Dustin, you get the email like at ten o'clock at night, maybe we'd get it that night or first thing the next morning, of where they didn't get a street and they got maps and what, what they just didn't have time to finish with all the other logistical issues that they're having. We've got to have a prior, you know, a protocol of, if we're going to go out and do it, what's going to be that time, turnaround time? You know, for example, one of the streets that got missed last week, drove out the next morning, if they're, let me drive down, check it out, and it was like, well, priority was already there first thing in the morning, so it's not something of, we're going to get that notice that night and send DPW out the next day, you know, priority's still going to probably have that next day to get to it. So maybe like a day after, two days, some threshold a time afterward, before that letter would kick in, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rabello.
Yeah, I just, just to add on to some of this, and I hate to pile on, but they deserve to be piled on. It's out, it's, it's actually out of control, it is going into hours of emails and sending things and following up to see if they picked it up. It would be a lot easier to know that they picked it up without having to call them back and say, hey, did you pick it up? Or the resident, did they pick it up? There's just a lot of wasted time in there, and I don't know, I, I, I would make a request that whoever's running priority waste, because, listen, we have an obligation to the residents St. Clair Shores to get their most basic stuff, basic services done. So I would make a recommendation or request to have whoever's in charge, whoever our point guy, to stand in front of us and just explain to us what the, what the heck is going on, because it is spun way out of control. So, is there a form letter that we can make it easier for, for people that are, you know, like Candace and then everyone else probably up here? It's, it's going into a lot of my, a lot of my time, okay, that it seems like this should have been, this should have been figured out by now. The same mistakes seem to happen, and I would, I, I want to see the guy stand right in front of us and tell us what the hell's going on, because it's, it's bad.
Mr. Frederick.
I'm going to pile on too, Dave, just for a second, so some, some of what we're talking about up here is missing streets or missing a house or missing, the other thing that seems to be adding up too is the amount of debris that never makes it into the truck. I, I got to tell you, this morning, I was at, I was at my mother's house and the, the truck came by to pick up the yard waste and picked up a bag and looked at it, looked at it because he thought it might, it might break, and instead of putting his hand on the bottom, just pulled the top, it broke all over the street, threw the empty bag in the truck, and then just drove off. It was like, are you kidding me, right? You know? And, and then, you know, the calls, the one that comes to mind is there was, you know, just a big old pile of glass because somebody was throwing stuff and missed the truck, glass in the middle of the street. Now, that, that to me is a huge, huge danger for kids and bikes and anybody walking or whatever, and so, I guess, you know, Matt, are you keeping track of all of these calls that, that we're either sending you guys or sending in? I mean, I know they're going to tell us maybe, but I, I'm not sure we're going to get the exact answer, but are, are we compiling this someplace so that, you know, and mostly for when we go back to negotiate for whatever, whoever the next contractor is, to make sure that we've got this language in the contract? And then, I'll say one more thing before you comment, and that is, to make sure that these guys put the cans back on the curb. Even if the resident put it in the street, the cans got to make it to the curb, not next to the curb, not in the middle of the street, which, you know, we've all played dodgem with those, with those cans, and not in the driveway, but on the right-of-way. I mean, these are things that probably need to be in the next contract specifically with some kind of remedy if they don't do it for us. Matt, sorry.
I know, and I, I reach out to priority, I try to do it so by email so that I can track it through my email system, I have set up a folder specifically for waste collection issues. Even if I receive it by phone call, I will pass along by email for the purposes of documentation.
Okay, awesome, perfect.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, and, and then, the last one, I'll just give you, oh, one more, one more, because this is eight thirty-three today, so they didn't pick up the trash on Friday, which I tried to get it on Saturday, which was grass clippings, and so they came by today at eight thirty-three, they picked up the individual's home and they said, thank you, no problem is that. The whole neighborhood needed the grass bags collected, gentleman told me that was sent just to pick up mine and the neighbors, they missed it, they missed the picking up compost of the entire row on Friday. So you can't make this stuff up. That current at eight, eight, eight thirty P, P, PM, I mean, you can't make this up. So you under, how, how do you, you know, it's, it's like you want to take this and smash your head against the wall, there's the grass sitting there and they walk away from it.
And, Mayor, can I, can I comment on that too? The other thing that happens is, if you leave those bags out there on your lawn for more than a day, it burns up the lawn. So that's the other thing that happens.
After they drag them on the street, because they see them dragging on the street, and then the, I tell you what, the bags are a little stronger than I thought, I told this to Mr. Lent, the bags are a little stronger than I thought because they drag them into the, into the car across the concrete, and they do seem to make it many times, which is, I'm surprised that they don't break all the.
Many times, but not all the time.
Correct. Mr. Lent, you may continue, but it's, it's a disaster with these people.
Mr. Karen noted that a section of sidewalk near the EV charging station by Veterans Memorial Park is still missing. He asked DPW to repair it before the summer concert series began. The missing sidewalk was filled with stone before the concrete to make it safe and it will be poured in the very near future. Mr. Vitale recommended that all boards and committees move public comments on the agenda items to the beginning of each meeting. Abby has sent out an email to the chair of persons and minute takers, letting them know that council has suggested moving audience participation to the beginning of their meetings.
Could I?
Yes.
Would have liked to been copying on that, and any responses that we get back from committee.
Yes, sir.
Did that include the pension board?
Yes, it would have been to all committee members.
Item thirteen is comments by individual council members. Mr. Karen.
Thank you. One thing I didn't see on the updates was pickleball court, as we were going to attempt to try to get that on the mid-July agenda and looking at BidNet today, there's nothing out there, so what's the update for the kite Monroe pickleball courts?
there's nothing out there, so what's the update for the kite Monroe pickleball courts?
I am waiting on direction from admin, actually. Because I, it went out to, we had Mr. Ray's looking into it, and then there was an email that suggested maybe we look into another engineer to speed along the process, and that's kind of where it was left off.
Okay, so I mean, we can check with AEW or Fishback.
Okay.
So the goal is to try to get this on here for the July 21st.
Right. So basically I'd have a bid package done within a week now. Okay. Couple of, I asked staff to follow up later on, but there are a few things in terms of the check registry. Denise has some follow up on some of the grass cutting checks that were in there. Rob, could you do more follow up on the prepaid ones for the chamber concert? You, you, you sent me a reply back, but it was, you gotta follow up with finance to figure that one out. And then Brian, you've got an email regarding the nine lead water line replacements. When you get a chance, you can just reply to that email. I appreciate it. Next, I want to thank Denise and the Macomb County Department of Roads. We got the nine mile road reconfigured today, so the repainting was done. I don't know if the lights are activated yet.
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
Good deal. So thanks for getting that all done in that period of time. I think that'll do, go a long way to make that whole stretch a lot safer. Next, Chief Allen. I know last, after the last meeting, I'd sent you and Deputy Chief McAllister an email regarding the Masonic pedestrian walk in terms of now that we actually pushed the button, it actually works and it'll actually change the signal within 30 seconds. I know I crossed there at the last concert, we had a lot of people. I didn't see an issue in terms of Jefferson traffic getting backed up from that. Any feedback from your officers?
No negative feedback.
No negative feedback? Good deal. Because that was one of the things, staying there with one of my members from beautification, and we got there like right as the light changed, hit the don't walk it, you know, and waited. And then it switched in 30 seconds, like John Lang's like, wow, that was fast. Like, yeah, the button actually works now and that, so. But I think they'll make that intersection a lot safer as well, that we're not gonna have a big people backing up on the sidewalks and the corners there for that, so greatly appreciate the county roads making that change. And last, just congratulations to Nine Mac Merchant Association, June Fest was a big success. Good crowd of people, a lot of great activities going on down there. And then also Social District Saturday night was just packed, awesome drone show that happened over there. So a lot of things happening downtown, so greatly appreciate that. And enjoyed working with Shorewood Kuanis as we were hosting the beer festivities at Blossom Heath on Thursday. Down for our Thursday night markets. They're still down in Blossom Heath throughout the summer there, so. Greatly appreciate everyone helping out with this, and that was it.
Just to piggyback with the drone show, we'll thank again the Shores Inn and paid $5,000 of that. The Cool Cities Committee which sponsored that, that was $2,500, and the Activities Committee another $2,500. So we, we appreciate those, Mary and Shores Inn, and specific the two city organizations that, without that, it wouldn't have been possible. And if Karen's right, it was packed.
Greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Frederick.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, the, it was funny, the Nine Mac striping that's going on there, you can still, you know, we're going through a transition of people having to get through that, that, that intersection. And there's still some anticip, it's almost like, oh my God, they painted, they painted those yellow stripes in the wrong spot, right? So people are like making the left turn and coming across the yellow a little bit. I think over time we'll see people in the, in the correct lanes and, and, and get a feel for it. But we should continue to, I guess, advertise it however we're doing that to make sure everybody knows. But it, it does look like it's, it's gonna be a nice little plus. So a couple of things, first off, just to remind everybody that there's a fundraiser and it's for the Austin Liscum and James Bush Memorial Scholarships. There's a field day, it's gonna be on Saturday, June 28th, it's at Lakeshore High School Football Field. It's 30 bucks, includes a T-shirt, raffle ticket, commemorative bracelet, and you can participate in, in, in events, and two different start times for the events. There's raffles, games, concessions and more. So again, this is for two families who lost their children a few years back, almost 10 years ago, to, actually, I think it is 10 years ago, in horrific accidents and, and separate, but, and they give out scholarships at several schools because of that. So if you can help them out, Field Day is coming up Saturday, June 28th, and I believe that the best time to check in there would be at 9:30 for the 3K and 11 o'clock check in for the Field Day. And if, if necessary, they do, they're, they're working with Venmo, Zelle and PayPal. The Optimist Club, which, you know, we, we know does a lot of stuff. They just, they just honored the police and fire at a breakfast and want to say that we had some really, really good folks to honor this year because they did some great work. Not to mention the one officer who swam back like about 100 yards pulling somebody with him. I was just amazed at that. I hope you guys gave him a, a, a swimming award for that as well, so, anyway. The Optimist Club is, is doing their third annual scholarship golf outing. That's gonna be on Friday, July 11th at the St. Clair Shores Golf Club. 8:00 AM registration, 9:00 AM shotgun. It's an 18-hole scramble with cart. There's continental breakfast, lunch to turn, buffet dinner, goodie bags, and then a ton of prizes, right, Dave? We're, we're on, on the move getting the prizes. There is actually a $5,000 hole-in-one contest, which there's one $5,000 prize. So if two people get a hole-in-one, it's only 2,500. Sorry about that. And then we've got a celebrity host coming out to visit us that day, so we're pretty excited about that. And if you need more information, here's the phone number. I'll give you a second. Get that pencil to write it down. Or you can go to SCS underscore Optimist Golf Outing at outlook.com. And then the last thing for me today is gonna be the library announcements. So the tiny art show is returning to the library for summer reading. Any patron five and older will be able to pick up a canvas from June 23rd through the 30th. The theme is Color Our World, and artists can use any material to decorate their canvas. Also join author Steve Plato on June 30th for an engaging celebrity tour, tour of the Motor City, where you'll discover a variety of notable figures from pop culture, sports, TV and film who have called southeast Michigan home. Copies of the book will be available for purchase and signing by the author. Registration at the library starts tomorrow. The public is also invited to Blossom Heath Park on June 21st for the 7th Annual St. Clair Shores Literary Walk by the Lake. Here, a variety of authors read from and discuss their work, starting at noon. No registration is required for that. And mom, keep hanging in there.
Thanks. Thank you. Mr. Vitali.
Yeah. Well, one of the things I was gonna mention was the need to trim some of the trees in the commercial district. But Mr. Babcock's here, he heard me mention that, so I think that one is done. Speaking of Harper, the former Hall's Nursery site is very overgrown. I had the same complaint last year. I have a feeling that's why the, the privacy sheets or whatever went up. But the whole point of the noxious weed ordinance is that, so we don't blow weeds everywhere and pollen and just hiding them isn't really doing the job. Also, their easement area, that used to be landscape beds when it was halls. They're cutting the grass, but all of the landscape beds have got weeds in them that are, you know, two feet tall. So if they're not gonna maintain the landscape beds, they should remove them, cut the grass, to be honest with you. I don't understand why they just don't clear the site. They're not gonna develop around the old shed that's on there anyways and just knock that down and replant it and have their site ready to go. Do they still intend to, I, I think one time, I think that was promised to be a Panera, and now we have a Panera coming to the city.
I, I can't, I don't want to speak for Denise, but I don't think we've seen anything or heard anything, so we can't give you that information, but.
Okay. It's. Not looking like something's gonna come there.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah, well, then they need to start maintaining. I was kind of patient because I thought something was gonna happen, but they don't have a plan, then they need to start maintaining that site.
Yes.
And then I didn't join in on the trash parade because my issue's a little bit different. I emailed everybody on this, and it is about 25% blame I'll assign to contractor and 75% I'll say to the individual businesses that utilize our city trash collection, which is very unique that this city provides trash collection to commercial properties. I'm not opposed to that, but it really is abused. They don't seem to realize they're saving them a lot of money. And by saying abused, what I mean is we have doctor's offices that overflow their trash cans or just put out plastic bags, and those get ripped open, they blow around into the neighborhoods. So we end up with people that live near these facilities having to clean medical waste off their lawns. How do I know that happens? Well, it's happened to me. And the other day we saw the complaint brought up on Facebook, gloves from a dentist or dermatology practice. Nobody should be having to do that. And because of that, I pushed for an ordinance two years ago that said they had to use the dumpster cans. But the problem with that is, is the policing for that has to somewhat come from the trash contractor. The trash contractors don't tag things now. The alternative is they don't pick anything up and put a tag on it, so I kind of remained silent on this. So I guess what I'm saying is we come time for trash contract renegotiation. We need to change the way that we collect commercial trash. And you know, one immediate suggestion I would say is that we should have no trash collection dates in commercial areas that are on Fridays. Because the problem then becomes they leave their business on Friday, trash doesn't get picked up until 8:00 PM. The cans sit around the whole weekend, fall into the street. That's if we're lucky and they actually use the cans. Half the time they're still putting it out in plastic bags. If it doesn't get collected, then the animals rip it open and it's all over the place. So they're gonna have to change their routes and no commercial trash collections on Fridays. I would suggest, you know, they do it on a Tuesday or something like that. So we've got a whole business week to catch up on that. But that's just something to note a year from now that we should do in our contract negotiation. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Burgess.
I'm gonna be short and sweet tonight. Just wanted to talk about the garage sale that's coming up for Cool Cities Garage Sale. It's gonna be the third citywide garage sale, third weekend in August, and we should have something coming out the first week or two of July, giving you updates of how to register for it. So it is citywide garage sale, third week in August. I had an absolutely fantastic time at the Social District this weekend. That drone show was amazing. I wish it was a little bit higher, a little bit over, but it was absolutely amazing. And I have gotten so much feedback on that. What a wonderful part of our city to be able to do this. Kids had fun. We, I would love to know if we can come up with some sort of roundabout number, how many people were there? Because it was jam packed. It was so much fun. We gave out ice cream. And I'm telling you, this is, we've done this every year, giving out the ice cream from Prairie Farms.
Dave Orlando.
Yes. Thank you so much, but I'm telling you, we literally had a hard time giving it away. I mean, there was so much ice cream in there. We were, my husband and I were walking down with boxes full of them, trying to still get rid of them. And we had, I mean, it wasn't as, people coming up as much, so maybe we need to shout it out a little bit louder or something to the back of the crowd. But it was fantastic. People had a great time. And just one last thing, I just want to offer my condolences for the Ed Jones family.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Rabello.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's because it's hard to give out. The guy gave, the guy gave Dave Orlando Prairie Farms, thank you, about 1,000, about 1,000 ice cream bars, so it's hard to give that many away. If we want to thank Dave, he's a St. Clair Shores resident and he loves doing that. And you lose Pet Shop was out there with the reptile display, and that was pretty cool. And as far as like the drones, I moved down to the south a little bit. I had a, a nice, a nice view. And I understand that people on the north end, it was a little low for them, but if you moved out a little bit and they seemed to like it a lot. I'll just reiterate with, you know, the priority waste thing. Dustin, if you can get the sales guy here or whoever's in charge, just to sort of, I'm not gonna beat up on the guy, just, we just want to sort of know what's going on. And so we have some answers for stuffs. And the Nine Mac stuff sure went over good. I'd never seen a crowd like that before, and that was probably one of the biggest ones. Mayor, it was, it was sizable.
Extremely.
Okay.
Extremely.
Just looking out over a sea of people, that really, that's really taken off. And it's, it's great to have made a mark like that, you know, that's five years into making now. And thank goodness for other people that support that. The parade folks were here. Someone mentioned, we already, already start working on the parade. I've already started sending stuff out to some of the harder, harder folks to get, so hopefully it's a, it's a great showing for next year. And Rob and Brian, thanks for your, your stuff today. You guys did a great job. And one last thing I wanted to talk about was sometimes you, you know, people are with you your whole life and, and they sort of make a mark on you. And you can call them an idol or whatever, but it's just someone that you've recognized as somebody that's overcome a lot of stuff, and you probably all have them in your life. They've overcome drugs, they've overcome psychological problems and came out a survivor. So with that, I lost somebody like that. You know, we all lose our parents or somebody close to us at one time. In fact, I lost my mom a few months ago. But I just want to make a salute to Brian Wilson from the Beach Boys, who made a tremendous impact on my life. And I'll miss them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Rusi.
Thank you. I didn't prepare much because I thought it'd be a lot later tonight, given the size of the agenda and the packet we were blessed with, so. Just a couple of quick comments. First off, congratulations to the Late Side Pala Club, their spring show with Trailer Todd's. They had the opening this weekend. 78 years they've been an active service organization in the city, which actually predates by a few years the founding of us as a city. So they have been promoting art and art education in the city for a very long time. So congratulations to the Late Side Pala Club. Congratulations to Angelina Yonan, who is the Miss Teen St. Clair Shores. She competed in Miss Michigan Teen this last weekend and won first runner-up and was awarded the overall interview award, so she did quite well. So congratulations to Angelina and the Miss St. Clair Shores Pageant Program. Dave and I attended the Early of Hope Players performance of The Wizard of Oz last week, and it was absolutely amazing. It was all kids and it was probably one of the best community performances I've seen. The kids were all very talented. They knew their lines. They got their march, they did their dances. The little boy who played Toto, literally for the hour and a half, he was dressed up in this little fluffy dog suit and was running around the stage and letting the other people pick him up and just totally immersed in acting as a, the perfect Toto. So congratulations to Early of Hope Players. It's a very, very talented crew of kids over there. And we also have the St. Clair Shores Players have their performances of Clue, the play, this weekend. And Brad and I attended that, and it was very, very fun to watch, and they all performed their parts perfectly. So congratulations. We have a lot of artistic and theatrical talent, musical talent too in this city. It's actually amazing what we have and what people choose to share with our community, so. Great job to them all. And finally, condolences to the Jones family with his long, long legacy of serving the city. There'll be inner thoughts and prayers, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lent, city manager report?
No report.
Item 15 is audience participation. You have a five-minute time limit. Views and opinions expressed. Under audience participation are those of the individual citizen only, do not necessarily represent the views and opinions of the mayor, city council administration, and city St. Clair Shores. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
We just need your name and the city you reside in.
My name is Earl Hawkins. I'll try and be brief, just regarding medical waste. I think that's dealt with in the Public Health Code. You may want to investigate that and see if there are sanctions and specific regulations regarding the discarding and handling of medical waste. It's a serious issue. And I think there is a body of state law. It's a serious issue, and I think there is a body of state law and regulation related to that. I really wanted to talk about.
Sir, can I have your name? I didn't hear your name and the city you reside in, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, my name is Earl Hawkins. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
And you live in St. Clair Shores?
Yes, yes, I do. Okay, so, anyway, I wanted to talk about fees. I saw it on the thing, and I was looking at the special land, land use regulations on, on our, on our webpage, and, and I looked under item 48-5612, procedures and program, procedures and requirements are day, and it talks about review fees. And our code says, fees for special land use shall be established by resolution of the city council and set forth in the city's fee schedule. So I looked at city fee schedules, and special land use and other zoning items are listed, but no dollar amount is given. So that may be an oversight, I would guess. I did look on the internet, and I had difficulty finding what other communities charged for that service. I did see that Macomb, Michigan charges $1,000 for the application, and if there is to be a planning commission meeting, there's an additional $2,500 charge. So I also looked at our fee schedule, and my sense is that it may be out of date. I thought the fees were inordinately low, and my suggestion to the city is that take some time and look at it, and update the codes, to make sure that we're really being adequately compensated for, for the services that we provide.
Okay.
I'll stop now, it's getting late, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yep, yes, sir. Mr. Hawkins, you already signed in earlier, so you can, sir, you can speak and then sign in after, if you don't mind, we just need the name and the city you reside in.
Will do. Dave Mesry, St. Clair Shores. I came before this body about a month ago, asking for the community's help in finding a lost dog. 29 days and 15 hours later, after some dogged pursuit, and a lot of help from everyone in the community, eyes and ears, and Ring cams and smartphones, and a very helpful neighbor of ours by the name of Jennifer Moore over in Roseville, who loaned us her dog trap, and a St. Clair Shores resident, Paige Foldman, whose Ring cam was the MVP, we caught Benny the dog Saturday morning about 3:00 AM, and reunited him with his parents, Tara and Jason. So Bentley, aka Benny, is safe at home, and I just wanted to thank everyone for keeping their eyes and ears out, he had quite the adventure. Thank you.
Nice success story. Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Guys.
With that, we'll just go back to the mayor's comments, they don't have any, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Karen and supported by Mr. Frederick to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Good night.
Did you say dogged pursuit?
Yes.
I think we're on the matter.